Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'll bring the meeting to order, and I'd ask that roll be called, please.
Blue?
Here.
Bozeman?
Here.
Disharun?
Here.
Holthouser?
Here.
Humble?
Here.
Reed?
Allen?
Here.
Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our first order of business is a public hearing for the FY nineteen budget. Could I please have a motion to open the public hearing? So moved. I make a motion to open the public hearing on the FY nineteen budget.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Abby Humbles, seconded by Brian Allen. Any discussion? Rule call vote, please.
Humbles?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Blue?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Disharun?
Aye.
Holthouser?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Mr. Hackett is here to present information regarding the budget.
Okay, since August, the final budget has been on display at the district office for public viewing. The only changes, and I have these in your board packet as well, changes since the last update, which was at the August board meeting, we did adjust the evidence-based funding revenue. I'm still used to calling it general state aid, so that's our state money. We have updated that based on the most accurate numbers from the state. Finalized a couple of expenditures in the education funds, some technology expenses, and then finalized some capital outlay expenses for new buses that were approved a few board meetings ago in the transportation fund. And that is all the changes that we have since the last meeting. In the board packet, you have the state budget form, which is what we send to the state and to the county clerk, and also a budget summary.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Hackett? Okay, could I have a motion to close the public hearing? And let the record show that no one addressed the board.
I move to close the public hearing and note that no one addressed the board.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Don Bozeman, seconded by Cheryl Blue. Any discussion? Rule call vote, please.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Blue?
Aye.
Disharun?
Aye.
Holthouser?
Aye.
Humbles?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We'll now move on to the public participation portion of the meeting, and Dr. Dearman will begin by presenting the superintendent's report.
I've got three things I'd like to present. The first is for Mr. Kenneth Baker. Mr. Baker, where are you here this evening? If you would please stand. I'll just kind of read this, it kind of speaks for itself. Says, "I am pleased to," this is from the University of Chicago. "I am pleased to inform you that one of your teachers, Kenneth Baker, has been selected for the University of Chicago's Outstanding Educator Award. This distinguished award has existed for more than three decades. Each year, we invite entering first-year students to nominate an educator who has influenced them, challenged them, or helped them along the path toward intellectual growth. We receive letters back from hundreds of students inspired by teachers who have changed the course of their lives, who taught them to reimagine text, to delve deeper into problem-solving, and to think beyond the borders of the classroom in the pursuit of their own education. So in recognition of Mr. Baker having a profound influence, I'd like to present him with a certificate." The next recognition is for Cynthia James, Dunlap Valley Middle School teacher. Mrs. James? Thank you. Mrs. James, it was a word, "Heart of Illinois, One Class at a Time Kids Count Rant." And if you could, for those that didn't see the broadcast, I did send it out. Could you give a quick summary of what that grant entailed, please?
Yes, it was a thousand dollars. And I was actually nominated by two of my students. I had expressed to them last year that I was needing funds to continue our NASA's Best Students Program. Didn't estimate that I was going to have that and more careers and would need more materials. So they took it in heart, and they nominated me for the grant. So, and I have lots of materials, and I didn't have enough to start the program again for next year's eighth grade students. So I'm pretty excited about that.
Congratulations. The next recognition, I'll embarrass one of our board members probably, because she didn't know this was coming, but through the Illinois Association of School Boards, they recognize different level of achievement by board members as far as their progression through the process and the training. So Cheryl Blue has received the master member, board member Level One recognition from Illinois Association of School Boards. So I wanted to recognize her for that achievement. For the rest of my report, we did have a FOIA request from Bryant Gumbel of Real Sports on HBO. It's a great show, I love it. Requested some information on, I believe it was 2012-13, number of student participants in football. And then the second part of that is how many were free and reduced for 1213 and then 1718. So we provided that information to them. They didn't give us any other information as far as what story they were building, but I'm curious to see how that plays out. Mrs. Ricky has been working on neighborhood communication, trying to think of a way to reach the non-student taxpayer within our district, and we have a number of those. So one thought I had was to reach out to the presidents of the neighborhood associations so I could get their contact information and get it to them, and maybe they could send it to their members within their associations. Cheryl helped me out, I believe, and sent me a link pointing me in the right direction. And then Carrie's been putting that together and is finalizing that now. So that should be done very, very soon. So I'm very positive, or excited about the positive change hopefully that will bring about and address one of those concerns that was brought to me about communication from district office. So that is a work in progress, but getting very near to completion. The Illinois Association of School Boards Dinner is at Peaking High School. I believe it's October tenth. Board members, if you would like to attend, please let Carrie know. She will make that arrangement for you. Mrs. Blue will be recognized at that meeting, so I will be in attendance. You are welcome to attend. Two weeks ago on a Tuesday, I did a city-county official tour. I was rather impressed. Actually, ended up being ten out of ten people on that day cleared their schedule to make time with me. It ranged from Sheriff Aswell to Mayor Jim Artis, State Attorney Brady. I could go on and on, City Manager Patrick Uier, a lot of people. And it was nice to put names and faces together, especially with the city of Peoria. Eighty percent of our student population resides in the city of Peoria boundaries. So trying to bridge that gap and make those connections. I also met with Dennis Seer, had breakfast with him. He is the representative on the city council from our area. So again, trying to build those connections and communication possible between the city and the district. So that is, again, moving in a positive direction. Along those lines, Heather is working with me as well as the principals in putting together the district community leadership team meeting. I know those have happened in the past, those will continue to happen. We're gathering names and putting things together now. That will happen again very soon, probably in the month of October. So just letting you know, that has not fallen by the wayside. That is being done, and we address your needs. At this point, I believe that is all that I have.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this time, we will move on to public comments. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? If so, please raise your hand. Okay. If you could sign in in just a moment, but first, I'm going to sort of address our policies. Before addressing the board, I'd just like to remind everybody of our process. Per Board Policy 2230, we ask that when addressing the board, please identify yourself and be brief. Comments shall be limited to five minutes. The speaker is asked to please conduct oneself with respect and civility towards others. Individuals less than eighteen years of age are permitted to address the board if accompanied by his or her parent or guardian. The board typically does not engage in two-way conversations during the public portion of the meeting. Any follow-up response will be addressed by the administration at a later date. To be respectful of others and to protect confidentiality, complaints against individual students, staff members, or board members, either named or unnamed, shall not be orally presented to the Board of Education. Such complaint should be put in writing, signed by the person or persons making the charges, and delivered to the Board of Education Secretary. At this time, I'd like to ask anybody who wishes to address the board to come forward and sign in. Have they signed in? Okay, thank you. So if, who's the first person?
It's a group of students.
Okay. If you want to come forward, and if you could come to the podium, and please begin by speaking into the microphone and stating your name and the topic that you will be addressing.
My name's Adi Marti. We're going to be talking about this part of our, that we started, this JAP, this, this.
Last year, we started to use the outdoor garden front of Dunlap Valley Middle School. A group of us decided that one would make it even more special. The garden is a memory of former Dunlap Valley Middle School teacher, Mark Joseph, and it represents her love of science and learning. We thought we could improve it.
Over the last year, we formed a group of guys together a few times. This is a set of years we joined up at the school, Jason Holmes, and a few teachers who named us as Joseph, and started making improvements over the summer. We planted a garden and made some seating areas as well as a little library.
We're excited to share our efforts with you on October nineteenth at Dunlap Valley Middle School. We'll be honored if you.
Thank you very much. I think you're next, Blue?
Just to sign in.
If you've not signed in, if you could, that'd be great.
Right now?
Uh, you want to sign in right now?
No, if you'll come see me afterwards.
Afterwards, you can, okay.
Okay. So, will you speak now?
Yes, absolutely. If you can state your name and purpose for being here.
Okay. My name is Curly Blue Johnson. Good evening, Dunlap. My real name is Curly Johnson Jr. I go by the nickname Blue. I live in Scottsdale, Arizona, but I grew up in Peoria. Proud graduate, nineteen eighty-two, Central. And after, I played ball there. After I left Central, went to Spoon River College in Canton, Illinois, in case you know. And then after leaving Spoon River, I went to Lewis College in Utaahville. Played ball there, proud graduate, got my marketing degree in nineteen eighty-seven. I got a tryout from the Harlem Little Trotters, and I turned it into an eighteen-year career and traveled ninety-four countries. And when I retired in two thousand and seven, they were afraid that when they retire, me. I wanted to play forever. I wanted to give something back to my community that's been so gracious to me throughout the years. So the best way I can how to give back was to start a Skills for Life Basketball Academy. And I started it at Peoria Academy and a basketball camp for boys. First year, I had ninety-six kids, but the big part of the camp was I hired the top high school basketball players in the area that served as coaches and walking, talking role models for the kids, the same way when I was a kid in Peoria. Mrs. Humbles? Your husband, you had a lot. The Dorian was a player. So I wanted to provide that type of role model for the kids. First year, we had ninety-six boys, and next year, we had double the size, the staff double. And then the third year, we went to two sessions of boys, and everyone was getting on my case. How could we not involve girls in the camps? And they were right. I wanted to give the girls a camp of their own, which I did. And I hired fifteen of the top girls players in the area, and it took off. Ray Kreider, who was the athletic director at the time, at Dunlap approached me and said, "Man, you got three camps in one day in this small camp. You need to bring it out to Dunlap with our incredible facilities that we have, with the draw that you have, and to bring people to Dunlap to see what we have going on here." I agreed, and moved it out here. Now the camp has over seven hundred and fifty participants from over eighty communities that come here for a week of brotherhood, sisterhood, basketball. And what you guys will all be proud of is that we stand for a lot of the things that I know you'd be proud of, and that's integrity, high integrity, stress of success, respect for yourself and others. And now eleven years, five years here at Dunlap, I've never had to kick out a single kid. I've had some knuckleheads, don't get me wrong, but we've made the camp competitive, and we've made it fun, and I love having my academy here. I could not do it by myself, okay? I have a great staff, I have staff, paint staff of over a hundred now. And also, my girls' staff is fifty girls. My boys' staff is thirty-seven boys from almost every high school in the area. And with that being said, I brought some, I asked someone to come with me today. And she is one of the best kids I've ever had in my program, all right? I've watched her grow up the last five years. I call her Prodigy, that's her nickname. And her name is Sophia Rimmel. And not only is she, I'll go out and say, is your best eighth-grade basketball player this year, but she's also a straight A student. So I know she wants to say a few words a bit later. I think maybe I've probably gone over my five minutes, but if you guys have any questions of me, please feel free. But like to backtrack, I've had people like Principal Mister Adrian help me out. I've had Katie Castle, the athletic director, help me out. I've had the people down at Dunlap Middle School, because we use both camps because of the size, that have helped me out. And that means the janitors, the ancients, the stoners, the maintenance men, everyone that's involved. The band, who has to put up with all the traffic that comes in and out of here and the noise. So I'm just appreciative, and I'm here today to thank you. So if you have any questions, give me upside the head before I leave, but I hope that you guys will give Sophia a chance to tell her side. I don't know what she wants to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you like to come up?
Hello, I'm Sophia Rimmel, I'm just a senior there. I can give you some of that. I think I wanted to show Curly Blue's campus for, I'm going to say five years now. And it's an amazing campus. I've created so many friendships that I've never met people before. I've been, I don't want to say anything, but we battled for our last long, become very good friends. And it's not just that, it's an amazing campus. You learn skills, you become competitive, and it's, sorry. It's a great use of this facility and DMS facility, and I know everyone has fun. And I've created, I've brought over people from Kanan and Jerkentown, and they came and they loved it, and they've been going a couple years now. And it's probably the best thing I've ever done in my entire life. And I'm not just saying that, it's an amazing campus.
Great, thank you so much. And if you could sign in at some point, that'd be great. Okay.
Right now? Do I have to go this way?
Either way, either way. Thank you very much, both of you. We're happy to have. You could dribble by. This concludes the public participation portion of the meeting. Thank you so much for participating. The board will now move on to the action items. The school activity account reports are included in the board packet. Are there any questions? Next, Mr. Adrian is here to share a summer school presentation. Mr. Adrian?
Do you want to share, or do you have any field questions?
Oh, okay. We can just field questions. Were there any questions?
Mr. Adrian, how did it go this year? I know in the past, is it still the same amount of rules as far as miss one day?
Yeah. Well, I mean, to be honest, the biggest numbers in there that you could look at would be, we had seventy-nine credits the first summer and two-hundred-and-seven this summer. So nearly tripled our section offerings, and it cost our district five-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars to do that. So, and if you saw the distribution of grades, you know, the vast majority of, nearly ninety percent were A's. We have got some good additions that the department shares about additional courses in the future. Trying to get some of the elective speech was one of those on there, I think it went really well. So we're trying to figure out how that will look in a three-week time period. But so far, it's been great. The PE went really well. One student, or several students, took two sessions of PE, so they wouldn't take PE all year long. So it's a busy campus now, it's active, and I think it's just for the future. So really happy with the way it went.
Very good.
Thank you.
Absolutely phenomenal results, Mr. Adrian. The number of credits and the opportunity for people to take other classes really focuses and hits on our mission, to have, you know, kids reach their individual potential. Now, it provides an opportunity to get a lot of credits and maybe dual credits, college credits if they leave, so they can come out ahead. And I think you brought this program to us from your former school district, so we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions for him? Okay. Information regarding the construction of soccer shelters is included in the board packet. Dr. Dearman and Mr. Wisdom are here to share information with the board.
At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Wisdom. He came to me early on in the summer and first spoke to me about this, and has been a work in progress ever since. So I'll let Mr. Wisdom kind of share what he's developed here in this powerpoint and go through that with you.
Thank you. You all know that I'm a member of the Dunlap Athletic Leadership Committee, and it's a small group, but we've been very active. Obviously, we need some accomplishments, or it's a group that takes its role very seriously. And one of the things that we do is, anytime we meet coaches from any sport, we like to talk to them about how their program is going, if they're having impediments that our group could possibly help reach, get over with. Or if there are any facilities that they need to make their program to be better. And at this time, I met Coach Al Hanson, who's with us tonight. He doesn't want me to do this, stand up. I told him about Coach Hanson, he played basketball, soccer, and rugby. And now he's been coaching here at Dunlap for seventeen years. He's our second-longest serving coach. And does fabulous shop at Dunlap, you know. That soccer team is extremely prominent, it's one of the best in Central Illinois. And beyond, it's fabulous, it's very quiet. So he asked me if I had seen their soccer shelter. Yeah, from the district, he said. And you meet me, so I met him at the fields, and he showed me the soccer shelters, and they're a little bit appalling. So we started working, and I asked him why these are that way. And he said, "I've been working on this for about four years to try to get this replaced. We need something more than simply a shelter that sticks out with the players. Other schools have a place where the kids can go, put their equipment in, where I can keep with them, use a whiteboard to draw diagrams, show them plays. When I want to show them something, I've got twenty-two heads sticking around the little border, you know, and it's not tremendously effective." And I agreed with him, and I said, "Well, why don't you have it?" And he said, "No, I've priced it out, and it's not really affordable." I asked him, "What are they talking about?" And when he told me what it was, he told me that it costs, and I agreed with him. I made a commercial for state development, and I said, "That's ridiculous. It shouldn't be significant, unless, if you want, I hope I'll jump in and start trying to accomplish something that's questionable for the future." So if we could, Jerry, are you? These are, this is one of the existing shelters. This is the visitor's shelter, and you can see right here. Well, that's not going to show up. If you can see it, there's one plexiglass panel that's remaining, so it's not serving a whole lot. If you go on to the next picture, that's the home shelter, and it has no panels on it. So obviously, something needs to be done. Apparently, it's been like this for quite a while. And not only is it not functional, but it really does make a very good impression for District Three, District Four. So we started looking, and I asked him what he wanted, and so he showed us, go on in here. He said, "There's really two things. We need the shelter, but I need this room. This is a little bit of an overstatement of a locker room. Has a connotation of showers and plumbing and the stand-up lockers." And I said, "I can, I don't need that. I just need a place to go where I can get the kids in or on a whiteboard, we can put our stuff, and we can hold up practices or during halftime." So locker room facility is a little bit of an overstatement. It's really a shelter. So I'd like to have just a kid's clubhouse, one for the visitors, one for the home team. They put hooks in the wall, and you can just be fly with the walls, and put hooks in there where they can hang their things. With benches on it so they can sit down, door on one end, a window on the other, so it's circular. He drew, he gave me a drawing, and this is essentially what he's talking about. This is the facility that they have it on lean, and these are fabulous, but they're block. He's talking about a room like this with a roof that comes out and shelters some boys, but he's not talking about block. He's talking about wood construction with siding and shingles that match the current press box that they have, which is good because it's fairly, this is less expensive than that locker room would be. And so if you could go on to the next area. This is the door on one side, and this is the inside. And this is basically what he's talking about, of the plywood walls. You can put hooks in there so they're not dumping everything on the floor. And I stuck my nose in here. Now, if you can imagine, the bags of twenty young athletes. It needs a window. It needs a window at one end and maybe a fan so it can get ventilation. But this is essentially what he's talking about. A room like this with benches on three ends, the windows so it gets ventilation and lights. No plumbing, no bathrooms, no lockers, just this. And so I started looking into this and pricing this before I came here. Again, this is what it would look like. You'd have the same panel, same siding, same shingles as the press box, so it would match. You want for the visitor's side and one for the home side. I think these, can tell me next. This is where they would be. The white areas are the existing shelters, and what he's talking about, black cross-assed areas are where the rooms would be. And then the red is where the awnings can stick out over the benches. So they're not really big, they're about fourteen by twenty, is all larger than they are. Coach Hanson told me that he'd been getting prices of fifty, sixty thousand dollars or more. And I said, "That's, I know that that's substantially way too high." And so I started looking into it. I have contractors that I work with, and because they want to continue to do business with me, a lot of times, they'll sharpen up the pencil and give me pretty good prices. And so we work with those, basically all through the line items of what we're doing, the concrete, carpentry, electrical supplies. And this is the final quote that we got, material from Carver Hummer. It's a really a good quote. Carpentry is supervision, fifty thousand, five hundred ninety. That is a cost not to exceed. One of my contractors said, "Not only is it tiny material, not only charge what we utilize in time, but we won't exceed that number." So I'm hoping and suspecting that we can get a better number than that. Concrete, we, I had a bunch of quotes, even those who tried to get any good numbers, didn't. One was twenty-nine thousand dollars. This was obviously the best one, so we use that. And for electrical, it's very difficult. We have to bring electrical from a press box underground over to this building. I talked to you, you think fancy, a few outlets and a couple of lights, and that's about it. We'd have to, basically, because the back of the building would bump into the fence, cut the fence right there on each side. It just happened to be the perimeter on that side. And then a miscellaneous number of two thousand dollars, hopefully, we wouldn't even need that. But the total is about thirty-seven thousand. And I think it says in there maybe a not-to-exceed number of thirty-eight thousand. I spoke to Mr. Dearman, Dr. Dearman about it, and he has some thoughts of perhaps some of the union contract. I spoke to Mr. Dearman, Dr. Dearman about it and he has some thoughts of perhaps some of the union contractors that he knows might donate some time and effort. Hallelujah, if we can get those people to do that and come in lower, I'm totally in favor of that. So, but in order to get, I mean, we're proposing that the board consider this number for these facilities. It's about as bare bones as we can make it, but I think probably as good a numbers as we can get without union involved too. Um, I know what the rules are now, have to have the bail and wage, all the contractors, all the legal requirements. And that makes it, well, the coast, uh, is it there?
No, it's great, thank you.
And again, this would be for the, the boys' varsity program, JV program. The girls' varsity and the girls' JV program. It's pretty much, I can't tell off the top of my head, how many would that include?
There's fifty-five boys that are participating in soccer right now. And there's another thirty girls, like, neither coach had a chair, the girls' coach.
Oh, sorry. So it's, it's, uh, the girls' program. Sorry.
Yeah, we're thirty, thirty-five, so you're up there.
So I think that covers my presentation. Questions that I can help answer?
Sure. Yeah, and that includes the, the teardown of the current structures, correct?
Correct.
I just have a quick question. You indicated at the beginning that you talked to several of the coaches and the needs that they need for each of their sports.
Yes.
Were there any other needs that, that they had mentioned for facilities that were needed?
Yes, uh, in, in fact, that brought up an interesting point in our, in our last athletic leadership committee, that there are a lot of needs and we learned for the first time that while there's a five-year program for facilities for the district as a whole, there is no component for athletics. So I should, our athletic director can address it better. And it's something that our committee would like to start working on. Coming back to you, there are some, some needs that are a lot larger here, the swimming pool, some fix to the swimming pool, which is not thirty-eight thousand dollars, but many millions of dollars. Uh, and so we, I've worked with various coaches at different levels. That's probably the top, I can talk to the baseball coaches who said, yeah, we need a lawnmower. We're out there mowing our lawn, it's a rotary lawnmower now. Does everybody here remember what those look like? Do they spin? It's not, it doesn't run by gas or electricity, it's a man now. So I said, I am sure that we can probably get you a lawnmower. Yes, and some of the coaches were very upfront and they said, you know, we're good, we're engaged. Coach Freeman, we're good, but the track is starting to wear out. At some point, the school and the street needs to look at replacing that. But that's not something that we just throw together and bring back to you. It's something that will take a bit of time to study and talk with all the coaches. Yeah, it's a good question, I have talked to a number of them and found out some of what they need. This one, to me, it's a maintenance item. We said we can't have those shelters, may as well be just torn down.
How long have they been like that, with those last coaches?
So our original soccer field was built behind the football field. And that was the first soccer field that we had ever had in our existence. Um, prior to that, they were put around all over the place. We would sometimes use the football stadium. Uh, and then when Dunlop Ellis built, we added on to this. They did have that property to build that soccer field. So those benches that are being used right now, those shelters were moved from our original soccer field now. So to give you an idea of the timeframe, those are probably, um, they were donated to us. Uh, they, they all, and that was probably sixteen, seventeen years ago.
And how long have they been without the?
Without the, that's when we moved and they were broken.
So it's been five years?
Yeah, ever since that field was built down.
Thank you.
Yeah.
With that being said, when I met with Mike, I, I agree, and I even said this to the board in my report, you know, something needs to be done and what the board decides, the board will decide. It can range from we just knock those down and have benches on a slab of concrete to we develop the structures he's presenting. Uh, one of the positives that's came of this, and Mike already alluded to it, was this was kind of the catalyst to start that discussion. And Katie's already working on it, the five-year facilities plan. Because yes, there's, there's always going to be people that need or want other things. But they have been prioritized. She know, she's working on that and will get that done. So if anything, this has started that conversation and resulted in a positive outcome there. As a board, you're probably wondering what my recommendation is. I guess it just goes to my philosophy, if you're going to do it, you do it right. Measure twice, cut once type of thing. Um, are there cheaper ways to do this? I should say Morton's picture, um, they, it looks like they've got like metal sheds behind their benches. I, I, I'm sure that's cheaper, but they're kicking soccer balls. If you kick a soccer ball into a metal shed, it's going to leave a dent. To me, that's going to look horrible, you don't do that. So I agree with Mike. Um, I think the carpentry portion of that at fifteen thousand is, that's obviously about half of the bill, not quite. Uh, I'm very confident I can get that done substantially cheaper. I have done that in the past, as recently as last summer. One of the people I met with in my tour was Clinton Drury, who does the, the union work. Met with him in downtown Peoria. I think I, he said if I need anything and to reach out to him and they do, do this type of work as a community outreach. So I, I think I could reach out to him and get some help. Just also through local contacts, having done construction, I worked at schools before. So I agree with Mike in that not to exceed cost is very realistic. I don't see it going over that and pretty confident we can get it considerably under that. So if you're asking for my recommendation, my recommendation is yes, that we move forward with this as presented with a not to exceed of thirty-eight thousand and then allow Katie to prioritize her list on a five-year facilities plan. And that will guide the board's decisions going forward as far as what are the next steps with other facilities.
Could I follow up on his comment really quick? Do you have similar concerns with the ambulance siding with kids kicking balls?
It's mine.
Or Mike?
Yeah, so if it gets broke, you can pull a sled off and put a new one on, it's a cheap fix.
I have not, I had a question, I'm not seeing these, I've not been down to the soccer fields. Are there, is there any useful life left in this? I'm looking at the picture here, uh, current structure that we have.
You mean like to donate to somebody else or?
Or if we could use it somewhere else, I don't know what, you know, they said, I think he said it was seventeen years old, most likely. What's, I don't know what the useful life is, I don't even know exactly. I can look at the picture and see what condition, what I'm looking at, but.
Sure. Well, they're, they are, they're on a steel. Um, and we, as the parents, I got the parents together and we went out there and we sanded them all down and tried to restate them, but they are rusting out in many places. So feasibility, yeah, we could get a couple of years out of them, but they are, they're a match game.
But you're going to demo it and most likely recycle it, I guess?
Recycle it, put it right in the vessel. And the other, I mean, just the one, we've had inclement weather and many of you know soccer, we don't stop unless it's lightning. So we'll play through rain and things like that. And it's, it's so funny when, you know, when there is a lightning, they have a thirty-minute rule where, you know, you gotta go and seek shelter. And when we have to seek shelter, the opponents go to a bus and our team goes to cars. And it's just, you know, you don't have the opportunity to sit together. Then you get everybody back, but when kids listen to music and, this has happened where he's listening to music, he has no idea that we're getting back out there and, you know, we're starting to be ready for the game and he's still sitting in his car. I mean, so it is, it would be, and it is kind of embarrassing seeing kids all carry, when it's, when it's, they all carry big trash bags with them. And then they put their bags in the trash bag and they fold it up and they just, it's, so those are all things to also think about.
Very good, thank you, thank you.
I would think this is a pretty needed maintenance issue. And I'm interested to see what you find in, to move forward. Any other questions for Mike?
Um, I just had the same question that Teresa had initially, just the list of priorities with all the, you know, sport organizations and, and what's out there and what, what's needed. Because I know we've had parents come to us before, we've had concerns about other sports and things that they need. And just to make sure as a board, we're making the right decisions with the limited resources that we have. Um, I think this is obviously something, I appreciate your work with Athletic Committee and the coaches out there. And it certainly looks like something that we definitely need. I'm just concerned with that list of priorities and how we push forward with that. Um, uh, you know, Dr. Dearman, if you can come through, hopefully the numbers can come down and we can, you know, look into some more information on it. But I think the sooner we have the list out and we're looking at a, you know, full picture, you know, the easier it is to make decisions. I mean, obviously this is something that we need to, to have for the students. And I guess my concern was, um, too, with the drawings that you showed with, with the block building, you know, we start talking about inclement weather and safety of the students, athletes that are out there. I mean, should we be doing a little bit more, um, I guess, investigation into something that really is going to be sturdy enough in the event there was major storms or something, that those students would have a place to go in a quick enough time where we are keeping them safe? You know, um, I agree that we don't just want to put a Band-Aid on the structures we have, but then, you know, if we're going to create something that we plan to have for a good period of time, should we be looking at what the pictures, should we be looking at that as opposed to trying to do something that's cheaper because it's better than what we have? Or should we be looking at something that we're going to keep long-term, realistically?
That's probably a question for lots of people, but to my own opinion, there are, there are a lot of buildings that are developed in a lot of places, including down in Florida with the hurricanes. And a lot of the buildings that we build, we stick them with carpentry like that. And so long as they're built, according to the code, they're fine unless the tornado hits right on. I wouldn't be concerned about kids being in there if they were properly built, as I know the building. Dr. Dearman, what's your thoughts?
I would agree. I'm trying to picture where your soccer field is and then where I picked my daughter up over by the concession stand. And I believe that is a block structure there, correct? So in the event that there, I would hope that we'd have some kind of warning that a tornado is coming, would there be adequate time to get into a more block-type structure?
Or the school.
Or the school.
Yeah, they, they wouldn't stay outside in a tornado.
And the building that you're proposing, are you similar to the tennis shed? Is that, it's, it's a stick building with siding on a tennis shed?
I don't think so.
I've been in it, I think it's like a garage with siding.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, it'd be nice to see what the options are, you know, and see what the costs are, you know, and obviously to try to get the list of other, you know, questions.
And to your point there, so the facilities plan is something that Scott and I talked about last spring and obviously just waiting for, you know, the administration to come in. I've spoken with Dr. Dearman and Mr. Hackett about it and we talked about it at length at our last NLT meeting and basically formed a plan moving forward to initiate that with all of those coaches so that they can, they'll bring their, uh, their needs to us and then also to involve, um, you know, the athletic director of the other schools as well. So, um, so I guess we started that all from like the coaches and things, so.
True, very good, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much for your work on this, we really appreciate it.
So Scott, what's the timeline, you bring this back for approval or?
Next month, this was informational this month.
Okay.
So I'll gather some more information and get some idea, I think I can get some help on some of those costs.
Okay.
Okay. The board will be asked to take action at the October meeting to approve a representative for the delegate assembly at the Joint Annual Conference in November. Beth Rea has volunteered to serve as the delegate this year on the board's behalf. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you, Beth. The administrative and teacher compensation reports are available for review by the board. Are there any questions? Okay, next, Mr. Hackett will present information regarding the district's insurance renewal.
Your information as far as the insurance renewal is, uh, November first is our renewal date. Uh, we have a meeting tomorrow with Pat Tatform from Unland and we'll be going over the insurance renewal. So at the October board meeting, we will have, um, a presentation for you to approve at that time. I don't see any major changes in looking over the renewal information. I don't think there'll be anything major from last year.
Okay, any questions? Okay, thanks. Um, Mr. Hackett has investment information to share with the board.
Sure, just an update on where we're at, long-term and short-term investments. Um, you, you'll see in your consent agenda, we're going to be approving something yet again. Schwab Legal has required more extensive documentation, um, as far as establishing myself and Dr. Dearman as the authorized agents. We sent a notarized letter from the board president and board secretary. That was kind of a temporary fix. Tonight, you're going to approve a little bit more specific language that Schwab is asking for. Um, once we have that done after the October meeting where the minutes are approved, I will send that to Schwab and we should be done and have official authorized agents on the account for myself and Dr. Dearman. Um, a couple of things, I have a phone call meeting next week with the representative from Charles Schwab. Um, we'll be starting that process of, some of our money is moved into the money market that we'll start reinvesting. Can't get that done until all the official documentation is ready. But I'll be speaking with him on Monday. And let's see, short-term investments, um, Dr. Dearman and I have been working on that. We're looking at a program he used in the past, um, it's called Cedars, uh, which stands for Certificate of Deposit Account Registry Service. Um, this is an order, a process where you go through one bank and through that one bank, you're able to get multimillion-dollar CDs and it's all FDI insured. That one bank then works with a network of banks. And so you get one rate, it's all controlled by one bank, it's a very simple process. That's what we're going to look at doing initially until we come, become a little bit more familiar with the district finances. We're looking at doing some rolling investments where we do some, put a certain amount in for a three-month CD, the next month do the same thing. So after three months, we'll always have money coming off or cash flow if we're ready for that. Um, and I think that covers where we're at on district investments right now.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Information regarding proposals for the refunding of bonds is included in the board packet and Dr. Dearman?
Miss H.
I missed one?
Modeling.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Hackett will provide an update regarding the status of the contract for Pepsi.
You were just tired of hearing me talk.
No, not really. Pepsi, yeah.
Yeah, update on Pepsi. Uh, we did secure an additional two thousand dollars per year, the latest version of the contract. So we are back to equalling the ten thousand dollar sponsorship that we have with the previous contract. So that was good news. Um, I spoke just to answer a couple of questions from last month. I did speak with the account manager concerning the purchase of products outside of the contract. Um, I called him and I explained that in rare circumstances that may happen. Um, I asked, is there any issue with that? He didn't have an issue with it, but he also said Pepsi was not going to change any of the contracts accommodating that. Um, he was very honest, he's like, Damon, he said, I wouldn't know. Um, he said, really, we're only hurting ourselves by doing that because then we're not getting the rebates by going through the product. But he also understands that it's a rare circumstance if something out of the ordinary happened. So that is an update there. Um, we did send the contract to our school attorney to review. Um, he had some findings that he now has sent to Pepsi Legal and we're now waiting for their response. So I'm hoping at the next board meeting, we'll have an also the five-year plan.
Okay. Any questions?
No, I just want to say thank you for your due diligence in that and it got us two thousand additional dollars in the rebate, which is positive. And then hopefully the language will work out with the attorney and Pepsi. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think so. Okay, now, we have information regarding proposals for refunding of bonds. Um, it's included in the board packet. Dr. Dearman will present the information.
Uh, in a nutshell, we basically did our due diligence and put this out to three different vendors to see what they could do for us. Um, the two thousand nine general obligation school bonds are callable for early refunding come January. So we've got time. Uh, so we met with Stiefel, Mesero and Morton Community and got prices from all three. Uh, Morton Community was about a half million dollars off of everyone else when Damon and I met with them. They weren't even in the ballpark and it was odd. So I had to ask the question, why is, you're not even close to the other two? Didn't really have a good explanation other than he thinks when his guys were pricing it out, they don't take them to market, they hold those internal. So the rate that they were giving us was their internal not rate, not the rate they could get if they took it to the market. With that being said, then you've got Stiefel and Mesero. You're looking at about thirty, thirty-one thousand dollars difference. Stiefel's price was better. However, I met with Todd Kraskowski earlier this week because I wanted to hear. However, I met with Todd Kraskowski earlier this week, because I wanted, he was in town, I wanted to have a face-to-face. What I did is I took Stiefel's, I had their bid first. I sent their bid to Todd and said, give it to me in this format, so I'm comparing apples to apples. And he did. So he had their information, sends me their quote, and they didn't beat it. And I say, you know, you had the information. Well, the difference is, when, they're guessing, when they take these to market in January, what the rate is going to be. And the Fed is meeting and changing rates they're going to meet towards the end of this month, it will change again. So it is a guessing game, and I think Stiefel quoted at two-point-nine-three, I think Mesero was like two-point-eight-eight, so you're talking about point-zero-five. As far as the rate, they were, well, each ten basis points, or tenth of a percent is about fifty-four thousand dollars. So if you do the math, that roughly accommodates, or accounts for, excuse me, the difference in the two price quotes. So to be honest, those two price quotes base on top of each other. I know there's a thirty-one thousand dollar difference, but the difference is in what Stiefel was saying they could get and what Mesero said they could get. So I don't think you're going to get better with either one, they're going to be about the same.
So, we aren't locked into what they say we're going to get, it's going to be whatever the rate is?
Correct. And it's very clear on both quotes, asterisk, subject to change.
Oh, great.
But, you know, they have to give us a quote based on current trends, so they're guessing what it's going to be, and so their guesses are a bit off. The only difference I saw between the two, I've worked with Stiefel before, Kevin Height is their representative, when you start with Kevin, you finish with Kevin, they don't pass you off to anyone else. Todd made it very clear to me that if the board decides to go with Mesero, which I know the board has a history of using them, they, he is going to pass that off to two of his subordinates, so we won't be dealing with him directly. I don't particularly care for that, but, you know, if there's a history with Mesero, I can live with that, but I wouldn't be up, doing my job, I wasn't up front to share that with you. So as far as my recommendation, Stiefel or Mesero, board decision, you need to let me know, but with the understanding, if we go away from Mesero, because the district has historically done business with, I do do business in this area, we will get passed off to subordinates when that happens. And that may not be a bad thing, and a lot of it's just paperwork, it's fairly straightforward stuff, but I think it is what it is.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you for doing that. Okay.
Before we move on, I should say, Dearman and I gave Morton the opportunity to resubmit and correct them, and they never got back to us.
This concludes then the information discussion items segment of the meeting, and now we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any clarifications or discussion regarding items on the consent agenda? Okay, then, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Abby Humbles, seconded by Teresa Holshouser. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Humbles?
Aye.
Holshouser?
Aye.
Disharun?
Aye.
Zouin?
Aye.
Blue?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Board will now move on to the action items. The bill list, treasurer's report, and district investment report are included in the board packet. Are there any questions?
I just have one comment. So going forward on the treasurer's report, can we have the percentages as to where we're at as we go each month?
We will actually approve the budget.
Okay.
Since we haven't approved the budget, we haven't been able to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so it's hard.
All right.
Pretty significant percentage realized, something like that.
Yeah, so we know where we're at, we're collecting our revenues and all that expenses, where we're at. Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, could I have a motion to approve payment of the bills?
I move to approve payment of the bills in the amount of five million, three hundred and eighty thousand, three seventy-four, and fifteen thousand, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Cheryl Booth, seconded by Brian Zouin. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Blue?
Aye.
Zouin?
Aye.
Holshouser?
Aye.
Humbles?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Disharun?
Aye.
Motion carries. Earlier this evening, the board held a public hearing regarding the FY nineteen budget. Could I have a motion to approve the adoption of the budget?
I move to adopt the FY nineteen budget as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Don Bozeman, seconded by Teresa Holshouser. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Holshouser?
Aye.
Humbles?
Aye.
Zouin?
Aye.
Blue?
Aye.
Disharun?
Aye.
Motion carries. Information regarding the district office lease renewal was included in the board packet. Are there any questions? Could I have a motion to approve the lease renewal agreement?
I move to approve the district office lease renewal for a period of one year as presented.
Okay, it's been moved by Brian Zouin, seconded by Abby Humbles. Is there any?
I didn't, so...
Oh, oh, sorry, I didn't hear that. Seconded by Don Bozeman. Any discussion?
I would like to just say that I'm going to approve, but this will be the last time I will, because I know that you're new, and we held off building until you could be here or looking for something else, but I would really love our board to consider, rather than throwing our money at rent, doing something that's less costly, and I know we've talked about this, but I just don't know where I heard the saying, but I probably will not vote yes or no.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Zouin?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Blue?
Aye.
Disharun?
Aye.
Holshouser?
Aye.
Humbles?
Aye.
Motion carries. This concludes the action items portion of the meeting.